Welcome to the House of Representatives, to the House of Representatives of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll call this June 19th, even, Commissioner's hearing order, we have the auditor, all three commissioners, the county attorney present. First, only in general, we're gonna do the Yoder Estate, the public hearing. Lauren, is it, Holly, is it you and Lauren?
Yeah, yeah, Lauren, um, come on up here.
You want to do it, we're in charge here?
What?
Just give a background of what's going on?
Yes, okay.
Holly, do we need to open a special public hearing meeting for this?
Yes, yes.
All right, and then it's, uh, just after six here, on six nineteen, I'll open up this public hearing for the Yoder Estate.
First of all, thank you for taking this matter so that we can get an opportunity to be here. I am here on behalf of the James R. Yoder Estate. He passed away here recently. He owns a half interest in a house over at Akron. It was an old farmhouse on twelve acres with some outbuildings. The other half interest belongs to Susan McFarland. In probating the estate, we have come to the realization that Mr. Yoder has no family. So his half interest should pass to his family, but he was never married with kids. His parents are passed with an older child, so he had no siblings. That gets us to the bottom of the probate statute, which means that his half interest in the house eschets to the state. And when I called down to the Attorney General's office, they said, well, that's a county issue. So that's why I'm here. You, as the county, technically own a half interest in this house. Susan McFarland is an interested buyer in the other half interest. She would love to own one hundred percent of the property so she can use it as collateral on a loan to invest in a business from her behalf. And so I'm here to ask what your plan is going forward. Christina shared with me that there is a statute governing your ability to sell, having to have two appraisals done. And we leave that advice up to your own Attorney General as to how you make the proceed under that statute.
Okay, so yes, Indiana Code thirty-six, one, eleven, four, talks about the sale or transfer of the real estate. So the first thing we need to do is get two appraisals on it, license by license appraisers, so that we know exactly what we're dealing with. So that's probably the first step. And then the statute goes on to talk about how we wanna get rid of it, or sell it, or keep it, or what we wanna do with it. So I think that the appraisals need to be done first, so that we then have an idea of what its value is.
So what are our options? I mean, I mean, after, after we have the appraisal?
We can sell it to her.
Okay, we don't have to take those out for, I mean, we can let her have it for...
Let's see, we can determine a minimum bid, and we have to, we have to advertise it for sale, so we're gonna have to go through that. Did you read this statute, Lauren? Yeah. Uh, we're gonna have to advertise it and put it up for sale now. The interesting part, and that we probably wouldn't have very many takers, is that they're gonna own it with Susan McFarland. So we're basically selling our part of it, right? So if somebody wants to own half interest in a house and...
So what happens if we don't get no interested parties?
Well, Susan would be the interest.
Oh, okay, well, she got, she got buy-in interest, okay.
She would, yeah, right. So then we'll have to determine like a minimum bid on it, and then we're gonna have to advertise it.
So...
But you all need to decide, I guess, right now, did you wanna keep it?
I guess, my personal opinion, and that's how actually we can do it, is, I mean, you know, she was obviously with this gentleman, and they had a life. But I don't, without part of time, somebody has to walk in on her and have half interest, you know, that's the troubling part of all.
I know, but the statute, and I, I think you concur with me, Lauren, that it has to be put out there legally.
Yeah, it's a separate...
That we sell it, yeah, 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 and not get his estate in order for it.
The thing for you can do is set a gracious minimum bid.
Right.
Well, I mean, I, whatever cost, I mean, if, if whatever a realtor views, appraisal fee is what I think, I mean, we don't need to...
Make money.
We can, we can have more hardship on, and...
Right, and then hope that nobody else decides they wanna buy a half interest.
I don't think...
When you own a half interest, you have access to all of the property, so you could, I guess, make it really difficult for her to be there.
Right. But that, unfortunately, that's what we have to do.
So if somebody comes up with a valid bid, or we have to sell it to them?
Correct.
Yes.
And that's why estate planning is so important.
That is our commercial policy.
His estate is in order.
Yes, I mean, his is really not in order. Yes. So, 'cause we have to have some of the options.
But I think we're all agreeing, and we're gonna, we don't wanna hang on to it, we're gonna...
I don't, I don't.
Yeah, is that right?
Yeah.
So I would just go ahead and do a motion to move forward with this, and get the appraisers and...
Get the stand wish that you get two appraisals on this piece of property.
Can you, do you wanna do that?
To move.
Okay, we'll have Lauren go ahead and do that, that way she can... Yeah, we need that.
Okay, who's you motion, I'll second it.
So is there any, any public comment on, okay, hearing ended, all in favor? Motion carries three and all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, just, Lauren, let me know. All right, thanks, Lauren.
Good, I understand the motion, if it closes public hearing on the Yoder Estate, so let it, second, all in favor? Motion carries three and all, okay. Now you're down to Christine Wolf. Be it Christine.
All right, I am here to update you on downtown activities. Um, the festival this year is August twenty-sixth. From eleven to eleven. And I'm asking for use of the courthouse property, water, electric, just like every year I've asked.
I guess we asked one ear, I mean, there's not a space we're looking at putting up on the, along...
We are not spiking anything.
Okay, that's not one of my questions.
No spikes. I mean, we have canopies, but there, nothing's spiked anywhere.
Yeah, that's what's been concerned, so, yeah.
Sound good, huh?
Okay. Um, then I will let you know about Boo Fest, which we don't, we set up canopies on the sidewalk. Some, some businesses who are not downtown like to get out handy too, so they set up on the sidewalk. And that is October twenty-seventh, from four thirty to six.
What was that date, in October twenty-seventh or second?
Seventh, seventh, yeah. And you're welcome to come and gosh and get out.
They don't need him.
Also, we gotta, we gotta clean the hair tonight, don't we?
And then the other is the holidays rule. That is Friday, December first.
Thanks.
Six to eight.
Christine, are you asking in for the lawn electric, or for all these events, is that what you're asking?
No, I'm, I'm letting you know, unless you would like for me to ask for electric and water for anything. It's basically an update. Actually, for, I may need an electric for holidays rule, it's the ice cutter guy.
Now, we've got a big maintenance mandate after Carrie Fear, I don't know, do you know Carrie Fear?
I do not.
So we'll have to give you his information, or give you either information.
Okay.
You can get ahold of him, so he can arrange all that for you.
Yeah, okay, good. Um, there is no Santa House, I understand, on courthouse property.
He changed that news to me, but, uh...
It was.
What, what?
I don't know the why. No, I know that. I, I, um, it has to do with who's constructing it, and who owns it, and I guess there's a lot of... Oh, it's in the fire, so to speak. Um, so, yeah, as far as I know, as of now, Santa's house will not be at the courthouse property. But, you know, the reindeer, ice cutter, stuff we normally have.
Good.
It will be on the, um, Centennial Park. He's going there.
Love to see it all, so...
Appreciate it.
Okay, and you have, got any questions for me, or...
Sounds good.
All right. Thank you very much.
Then we have department updates, for, starting back, John Geyer, Hiley Park.
Good evening, John. I'm everybody tonight.
Good.
So to start with, I've got permit requests, got one amendment, I, um, twenty-three, twenty. Uh, Emily Meldrick, uh, she's requesting a permit, uh, and that's from Precision Utilities, uh, to install and thereafter contain a cable starting at a terminal located on the north side of three hundred north at one-one-two-seven-five west. Uh, she wants four twenty feet under the roadway to install service at a residence there. I really don't have any issues with that. Precision Utilities, other than they need, you need to send her a first copy of God's dematerial thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It, it, it feels a lot of crap, so I'm... They probably have it. Usually we catch that, I can, you can see it.
Yeah, and we have any questions for the John, I'm gonna approve, approve, permit twenty-three, twenty. Second, all in favor?
So, the guys been patching, changing culverts. We did get the brush cutter that we got in, uh, we got that in service, uh, we've got it running every day, it's making a difference. There's a lot of brush to cut. So, we did get calls, I knew, Brian, you got a call, um, we've been sending it out, there's a lot of brush.
Be working good then, huh?
It is, and the thing I really like about it, uh, it's got that mulching head on it, so unlike the, the one prior that just cut it and left it lay, this one grinds it up, puts it in the, like, mulch. Barely tell the machine's been out there after it goes down. So, it, it really leaves things in a lot nicer condition, so we haven't had any, any calls complaining after it goes down the road, so... Does a nice job. And then mowing, uh, the guys have completed the first round around the county mowing, they've started on the second, so, which isn't growing as fast with the low amount of rain we've had, so, calls on mowing, haven't been too bad here lately, so, they're doing that. Um, wanted to talk about Bridge Fifty. Katie, if you've got any information on it, but what I've heard from Justin Sherman with USI, um, we did have a progress meeting last week, and AT&T plans to splice in their new cable on the thirtieth of this month, and that'll leave LaPorte Construction the ability to start their bridge work.
So anytime after the thirtieth?
Well, LaPorte might start before that, uh, so any day they might actually start, but they will start after the thirtieth, for sure. So they, they could actually start before the thirtieth, because they've got a lot of work they can do without disturbing the cables attached to him, or edge.
What, what was the closure date on that event? Ask, I mean, was that sixty days? I can only have a close for sixty days. That sound right, that sound right to me, but maybe not.
I'm saying it was a hundred, oh, well, okay. Twenty or eighty?
I have to fix that.
It's quite a bit, I think it's more than, I think it's a hundred and eighty, to be honest with you. I think November fifth, if they close it, uh, the first of July, I think November fifth is the open day, three open days. So that will mess up hard, but...
Yeah, will mess up hard, okay.
But, that's a lot better news than what we previously heard. They do have a, a hard date of changing the cable, so they are gonna do it on the thirtieth, so that, that's pretty ironclad, I guess. The Community Crossing Project, I did have that, I should've got your signatures for that at the last meeting. That we had, when we had bed opening, I just need to grab those, and I need to get Finn and Brown's signatures yet too. But, if I can grab them in front of Blue Ink tonight, you got Blue Ink? Okay. Grab the back term tonight, with Finn and Brown, and...
You got, you got it.
While you guys are working on that, I did wanna talk to you, Linda Wade from Fulton, uh, she contacted me this afternoon. Fulton Fund Days is coming up in August, and she was asking if we could take, the Highway Department can take down the electronic signs that we have, and the EMA has, and put them up when they have their detour for the parade, and help the town of Fulton to detour traffic around for that, if you guys have a problem with that.
We can't help you.
It's fine, this, that's not really a deep deal, but...
Up the traffic load?
It'll be in August, so, uh, just wanted to run that past you. Uh, the next thing I have for you, and this is where Katie can step in here, is I've got a, uh, construction inspection agreement for Old Thirty-One, Katie, you wanna chime in on this?
Sure. So this is for the southern portion of Old US Thirty-One, going to letting January twenty-twenty-four. So this is the construction inspection contract, so this is an eighty-twenty, um, federal aid project, just like the other inspection projects that we've done here recently, um, so it is for the four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, so that would be starting next fiscal year.
And that's Old Thirty-One South, this is for clarification?
Yep.
Any questions on it?
This one?
Got any, got anything to add, John?
No, not really. I just need blue ink on this one.
Are you kidding me?
No, I'm not.
You have...
That's a total reclamation of that, really, correct? Because you go down, there's two Macy's or Sedge Farm?
Yes, yeah.
Just cheering it up, and everybody...
You have a chance to review that too, didn't you? Let's boil the plate, there's not really much we can do.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else you wanted to talk to them tonight about?
Um, only other thing, and so I'll get in touch with you guys about the State Road Fourteen project that we've been working on and trying to find solutions on, so, we met about that and talked about that a little bit last commissioners' meeting. Um, so I sent you guys a message earlier today, Maggie's looking into three possible solutions, none of them really ideal solutions that we were hoping for, but kind of three options to hopefully keep the project, um, improve the ability of getting it permitted from Indot. So we're looking into that, looking into the costs of each of those three options. We'll be ready to present those to you with a recommendation next week, um, to determine what kind of additional investment will be needed to hopefully get it permitted. So I would recommend that we review those options and then regroup with Indot, um, and make sure that they're on the same page like we thought they were last time.
Just trying to kind of add a little to this on.
Basically, what she's talking about, we had a sidewalk for going for the school evacuation route, we had a lawman plan ready to go out for bed, but Indot had already signed off on it.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it had already signed off of it, they got, I don't know, somehow they reviewed it again and decided they wanted to make some changes, changes on it, they wanted to...
Yeah, they had some additional folks review a permit request who were not part of previous discussions and did not agree with the recommendations that Indot made previously, and so have requested some scope changes to the project that could be significant, we're still trying to work through those and want to make sure that we're meeting with the, who's actually the decision maker, and not to make sure that the permit does get through. So that's where we are, not giving up.
Thanks, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's basically everything I've gotten for you tonight. Any questions for me?
Yes, US appropriations that was supposed to come through tonight that you want, you want pulled out, is that correct?
Yeah, there's one for the power group, the seven, seven thousand, or seventy thousand two hundred, though, that would need to go through, I need to...
Yeah.
Not my pack, at least.
I think that was approved at the morning, a couple weeks back. The seventy-two thousand, because Institute of Council tomorrow.
Okay.
So the other one, you're gonna figure out what you're gonna do and re-present it, or...
Yes.
We talked about the last meeting too, about Chippin's Hill, kind of put on hold, has anything available to change concerning that?
We'll have to regroup and, and...
Does it just need to be advertised, or do we...
Yes, we have to get this figured out, re-advertise track.
Because I know we got some roads here that need to be... Okay.
So, that's where I'm at.
Okay, thanks, John.
Leave this one here, it has to be attested by Christina, and he's on the table.
This one? Thank you. Thanks, John. Thanks, John.
Yep.
Josh Ross, IT. Evening, Josh.
Hey, good evening, under the four of you. Little update on what's been going on, three of you, I know, are well aware. Probation was moved in last week, pretty seamless process, didn't really have too many hiccups. Uh, had a couple of tickets go through the following morning on some simple things, but I think everything's tied together and they're good to go, haven't heard anything to have since. Um, pretty easy transition. Uh, the other update that kind of coincides with that, uh, switches, we, you know, a couple months ago, finally received all the switch equipment that we ordered. Uh, we just have the annex and courthouse left to replace, and then we'll be complete. So there's still some boxes set up in the hall, but other than that, uh, we're, we're making pretty good progress on that, so, we're good there. Um, intend on starting on Highway Department as far as those security cameras here in the next week or two, uh, either this week or next, as far as getting the wire ran over to the garage and then getting the cameras up, we talked with both of the Johns about that. Um, I think we're good to go. We discussed possibly locate that needs to be done in between the office complex and the shed area, but other than that, we've got a conduit that runs across, so we shouldn't be going, shouldn't be a lot of issues there. Other than that, as far as Circuit Court, I don't know if the three of you have seen the upgraded Circuit Court, um, pretty impressive, it's worth a look.
It does.
I know the judge is looking to move forward with that. Judge Lee and Devon and I did a test call out to the jail last week, went through flawlessly, uh, the audio quality was great, the video quality was great. Uh, I think he's waiting on, if I remember correctly, he's waiting on two jury monitors there at the jury stand, uh, and he's waiting on the sound panels, there was a manufacturing defect with the paneling, so that's put us behind a little bit. So, that's kind of an update of what's been going on.
How big a screen was that?
It's big.
I was in there the other day for a meeting, and he was playing out with the...
Ninety-eight or a hundred inches, and it's a large screen. And, and what, I mean, honestly, what's nice about it, I think they're already utilizing court, and all you can speak up, you probably know better than I do, I've heard the judge talk about it a little bit, they are taking advantage of trials, you probably know, they're taking advantage of...
Not trans...
Yes, yeah, and the, the monitor, as far as documents, they can put the documents right up on the screen, everybody can see it, so... It really is a very, very nice system, and I think once we...
And they swivel, so when you're cutting stuff, you can just do that.
That's right, that's right. So it's, it's definitely, we're taking a look, if you haven't seen it, if you guys get a chance, we can do a little rundown with you, and you can check it out. Before I go into the fun stuff, the bad part, do you guys have anything that, that I need to be aware of, or Devon needs to be aware of here in the next coming weeks, anything that's outstanding, that needs to be taken care of?
The only thing I've been on is the website, we need to eventually get our own website?
Yep, you bet, yep. And we, we've got an upgrade process for that, and that should be pretty seamless, we did that going, just wanna kind of get some loose ends.
And I know you bet did.
Yeah, yeah, but other than that, yeah, we definitely know we need to do that, there's gonna be a complete, you know, remap as far as the, the structure of it altogether, not only the information, but the structure as well, so... All right. So, the three of you are aware, I talked to you in the last month or so about the infrastructure that we have currently. Our storage and computer resources are going end of life in twenty-twenty-four. If you flip to the second page, not the first page, we'll get back to that, if you look to the second page, you'll notice this is a timeline here of our converged systems lifecycle. On, uh, February of twenty-twenty-three of this year, uh, the end of renewal went into effect. We can no longer renew our maintenance contracts with those devices. Now, unlike our typical computer systems, where they're sitting on your desktop, that happens, no big deal. The problem with this is, this is all of our data across the county. Every location that we have stores data on these, on these systems. They're expensive systems, it kind of breaks my heart, because when you look at the cost of these, we have had these for seven years now. It's hard to sit there and just do away with equipment, but the companies unfortunately kind of have our hands tied. What we'll run into is, so we have two Uniti four-fifties, which is the second, well, it would be, if you look at the page, it would be the last line down, uh, the VX block, three-fifty, Uniti AF, all flash, which AF means all flash gen two. If you look there, we have two four-fifty Fs, we have one here at the annex, and we have one out at the detention center. Those go end of life, service life, February of twenty-twenty-four. We can no longer renew February twenty-twenty-three. The same goes for the three-hundred hybrid system that we use for our backup storage, and that goes end of life. I will say on that system, we're running low because of retention schedule, the data at rest on that machine sits as an archive, basically, and as an active backup, that we're gobbling that up pretty quickly.
You said, you said these are seven years old, is that...
They're seven years old, yes.
Is that pretty much standard, I mean, when you buy the five electronics...
For, for, for the sands, for the storage, the storage area network devices, yes. I mean, it's kind of typical, it's run-of-the-mill. We had a, a VNXE system at both locations prior, and it was about seven years for that, it was a little under, but close to seven years, so...
Josh, if you can, give us the public here just a brief, what end of life needs and what happens, it took, don't be...
So, so this is my major concern with the block for these systems, it's not the fact that the hardware itself is bad, the hardware is fine. The problem that we have is EMC Dell no longer supports that. For example, if I decided today to sit there and order additional storage for that, which would require a shelf, basically it's just a shelf, it looks like a server rack, or a, a server itself, it's just full of hard drives. If I put that in, I could add storage, the problem is, the storage is no longer, you can no longer purchase a shelf for that and have it supported, it's, it's done. My biggest concern with this is the operating environment, it would be like with anything else with cybersecurity issues that are constantly going around, the operating system for our storage arrays are no longer being upgraded at the end of service life. Once you hit that end of service life, you're not gonna get any more updates. Does the equipment still work? Absolutely, it still works, and that's a hard pill to swallow, because you know it's still gonna get you by what you need to do. But the problem is, if we make a phone call, we have something happen to the equipment, we're no longer gonna get support for that. Does it worry me, Devon and I can... Does it worry me? Devon and I can sit there and replace drives all day long in certain parts in the units. But there's other parts that we just cannot replace. And if Dell's no longer manufacturing and supporting those devices, we're at a standstill. Being the fact that we have these devices and we utilize these throughout the county. If we go down, it's just not one department that goes down. It's multiple departments.
Basically, in the light of media, insurance is done and something happened, we're just.
Yep, yep, yep. In, 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 I hate saying this in a kind of grotesque way, but it's the company also telling me we want more money.
It's what else?
And it's, it's, it's the truth. And then if you flip to the second page, you can kind of see the important notice. It's talking about the end of standard support for the Unisphere Central and that's the software that these storage arrays run on.
So how long, you know, you went ahead and got ordered and whatever, started the process, not only that process?
So with the system I'm proposing, Dell is very, very strict about the installation process. It's basically a turnkey solution. They build it customized to your needs. They bring it in, they set it up, and then after that, they say, do what you want with it. We know we can set it up as well, but you don't have a choice for this system. They come in and they set it up. When I talked with Dell, I asked them what the timeframe would look like. Should we order a system like this? And they said six to eight weeks. And with the new switch equipment that we have in place, we're gonna be able to support the new systems. Basically, we'll just go ahead and get into it. I'll get back to the original quote. So unlike the traditional systems that we have now, we have compute resources, basically servers, processors, memory that attach to the storage. They coincide with one another. With that system, it's been pretty traditional for us. That's what our go-to has been. With this new system, this is a VX rail system. This is completely hyper-converged infrastructure system. Basically, what it is, think of it as servers, traditional servers with storage, any server. There's six nodes. Those are the servers. The nodes are considered the servers. There's six nodes at the annex building. There's six nodes out at the detention center. They communicate. They see a heartbeat between one another. Data is shared across the board between the two systems. If the one system goes down over here, the other system automatically takes over. We've set up our network here at the annex and at the detention center. It already acts. If one side goes down, the other side takes over. This one, we want to stay true to that. We've been happy with that. It's really kept us out of a lot of issues in the past where we've had to take something down. It doesn't affect anybody. It doesn't affect everyone as a whole. It just affects certain segments and that's it within the, the county. So there is a total of no, excuse me, not six nodes, five nodes here at the annex, five nodes out at the detention center. There's licensing involved too, just like what we have with our storage. We would carry the current licensing that we have now for the storage. There's more compute processors with this setup than what there was with the previous. We know that we want, if we're gonna spend this kind of money, I, this system here, unlike the seven years, this system, you need to replace or upgrade a node. It doesn't matter the timeframe. You can put another node in place and it'll marry right in. Now granted, it still has to be a VX rail system. Then it doesn't matter if it's a VX rail system that's three, four, five years down the road. It'll merge right in with this system here. So if we say, hey, we're running out of compute resources, we're running out of storage, we can just put another node in place and it'll marry right in with this current system that we're proposing.
Have they indicated how long life expectancy of this system?
This system should be about 10 years. And then if we want to add on to it, we can always add on to it. And then as we deem fit, we can sit there and take the other nodes out of service and replace it as we go with new nodes. So unlike what we have now, where we have one individual storage unit here, one individual storage unit or at the detention center, this is multiple nodes. So each node is having, will have 10 drives in it. So you have five servers, 10 drives across each one. They create a virtual area, basically a VSAM. It's like what we have now, but it's virtualized. All those drives communicate with one another. You can chop them up, do whatever you want with them, but they all communicate with one another. Trying to, trying to put this into terms and I'm probably way out there and forgive me. But unlike now, where we're relying on one piece of hardware for storage, this is multiple units, five nodes acting as storage arrays and they all communicate with one another. You can marry them together. You can separate them. You can do whatever you want with them. We currently have VMware licensing that we're current with, but we're gonna need, with the additional processing power, we're gonna need additional licenses. So we will be carrying over our traditional licensing that we have now and then add the additional licenses along, licensing along with this. The other benefit that we have is right now, we have virtualized our servers. We intend on in the future, virtualizing our desktops as well. It gives us more manageability and it gives us more longevity with the physical piece of hardware on people's desks. No longer do we have to worry about compute resources or memory resources on that particular desktop model that sits there at the secretary's desk or the assessor's desk because all the compute is being done off of these units. So it takes care of two things for us. It does our compute and our storage for our servers that we already have. We have 52 virtual servers as it stands now throughout the county. And then this, as we go on, this will take care of our desktops as well. It will give us more longevity on our desktops. Instead of having to sit there and constantly swap out desktops every so many years, this will sit there and allow us to sit there and run the compute on the actual nodes themselves, not on the desktop. You'll still have a desktop there. You still have to have a means to get that information there. But the resources on the desktop are no longer a concern like they would be in the past. I guess I'll ask you, do any of you have any type of questions? One thing I'll, I'll bring up. This is built in with five years of support for the hardware already. So there's no.
The price is built in five years?
Five years. It's a four-hour response time, 24/7 onsite service. And I'm not a big fan of onsite service just because it's not necessarily needed. We can do a lot that ourselves. But with these particular devices, there are certain parts. For example, three years ago, we had our SAN have an issue and we asked if they could send the part to us so we could replace it and they said, not this one. We have to have a tech physically come onsite and verify that it's working again. And we're gonna run into the same thing with some of this, some of this equipment. But again, it's still service, serviceable by us as well. To a point. So I'll just get down to the meat and potatoes. The total cost, the total cost for this is nine thou, nine hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents.
And if I'm broken, it's right. You got nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty in the bond for it.
There is. So let me go back. My understanding, unless things have changed, there is on the bond for the five-year go bond, there's a storage area network of four hundred and fifty, that's four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars, seven hundred and sixty dollars. There's the VX rail virtual hyper-conversion structure, three hundred and fifty thousand. And then there's the VMware licensing renewal, eight-five thousand. That takes that cost, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. And then COOMCAP for 2023, there was a hundred thousand dollars in there at the beginning of the year. I have spent thirty thousand of that. I think I'm hovering right around sixty-nine thousand.
You have spent thirty thousand?
Yes.
So, so this number will be subtracted by thirty thousand. So you got nine hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars to spend.
Correct. And then there is that VDI line item two, which is virtual, virtual desktop.
Yeah.
That I'm sure we could probably use some of those funds for as well, being the fact that it is for virtual desktop integration also.
Where do you have?
It would be, it's not highlighted, Rick, but it's the hundred twenty.
Oh, I see it. I see it. Hundred twenty. Okay, okay. But the way I figure, you got enough money and then a little bit.
Correct. I'm not asking for any additional money. I'm just asking for your blessing to move forward. We know that we're gonna have to do replacement. One of the things that's been asked, which was rightfully so, the three of you, I think, had asked me before, if I got another pricing. The problem with Dell, EMC, HP, any of these large vendors anymore, when you call up a ref, they lock that ref in. They get the best price. Nobody else can sit there and bid against that person. So that's what I'm up against. When I called up Dell EMC, I told them a vendor I like to use or a reseller, I told them IT Savvy, and they locked Eric in for the best pricing. And I have asked Dell, what we have done as far as price is concerned, the first price that came in was about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars higher. We've got that, that price down. So we've worked them away. And I think in the past, when I talked to you guys, whether we are helping with that or our firewall, we've always really knocked them down on price. So I've tried to knock them down the best I can.
The only question I got, does that satisfy the bidding process?
Would that apply to the actual hardware? Because I know with a process like this, again, with Eric being locked in, Dell will not give out pricing to anybody else with Eric and IT Savvy being locked in. And if you would like me to talk with him tomorrow before I go to council tomorrow evening, I'd give you a better explanation on how that works.
That's the only.
Yeah. Because what you're saying is we don't have anybody to bid in and out to, to get more than one bid.
Correct. Correct. Yeah, because what Dell EMC will do, the opportunity will be locked in with Eric and IT Savvy, and that would be his opportunity.
I, I think that's the exception that if, if there's only one company that makes green turtles, then you can't go anywhere else to get any of the green turtles. So there's nobody else to get it.
And I can get that. I can talk, Holly, I can talk to John Fiume from Dell EMC and then bring Eric on the line to an conference call with him in the morning and ask him if he can send me some documentation on how that opportunity works.
Yes, yes.
And, and make sure Holly gets that. She's gonna be the one to tell us.
Absolutely.
Because we need something that says, there isn't anybody else out there that we can get bid from.
And, and I know they've locked in this price for me. It's the typical run of the mill, you know, we're gonna hold on to this price for you. But I think that, you know, we, we've shown them that we're pretty serious. I spent a lot of time on the phone with this group, back and forth. I, I think they know. You know, it, it takes us a little bit more time. It takes us a little bit more time. I mean, if they want to make the money from us, they're gonna have to be willing and willing. So.
No, and I don't see that we got a choice. I honestly, I hate to spend that kind of money. I know they evidently have been, for you guys has been seeing this coming because you put it in the bond and you put it in, so you've got the money. I appreciate that.
Yep, yep.
But, uh, yeah, we gotta satisfy and make sure we're satisfying the bidding process or we don't get it.
So kind of give you an idea of longevity with this system compared to the current system. Our current system that we have now, our storage capacity is 25 terabytes, a little over 25 terabytes. That's for the two systems operating in conjunction with one other. That's not our backup system, that our backup's going to. This is active data on a daily basis. We're right around eighty-five percent usage with that. Down the road, we've overheard rung lanes about going, you know, tying in with some other systems elsewhere and, and, you know, working together. Should that happen, of course, looking at just data retention in general, I've watched one of our biggest borrowers of data has been Spillman over the last couple of years because we're putting a lot of information in Spillman, whether it be, you know, photos, this or that, it's there. We've watched that, you know, grow over time. Has it just grown rapidly? No, but it's grown. The other thing that I wanted to look at with this new system that I found attractive, personally, Devon did as well, is this is going to take care of two birds with one stone. This is not only gonna continue on our virtualization path with our servers, which has done wonders for us. But it's also now going to bring us into the realm of the desktops as well. So buys us a little bit more time with the desktops. Do we spend an absorbent amount of money on desktops? Not necessarily compared to other things, but the one thing that we have done in the past with our desktops, unlike a lot of traditional market, you know, enterprises or companies where they buy the bare minimum and then they sit there and they turn around and replace it within three years, we try to buy something that's gonna put us in play for five, six to seven years. And the way I look at it would be the same way that any of you would look at it too. Is sure, it costs a little bit more, but what a lot of people don't factor in is that's time and money that you pay, Devon and I, to sit there and take the equipment out, put it back in place, image it, all that. So it's, it's going to make things a lot more simplified for us. It's basically, we create an image for a desktop. We can roll it out to the courts, for example, and they're good to go. They say they want to make a change, they're good to go. From a management standpoint, it's, it's a much easier process for us. But again, I know it's a lot of money. With this, this buys us more longevity as far as the hardware is concerned and the licensing. We still will, within five years, have to renew that licensing. But beyond that.
What is the licensing?
The licensing's pretty hefty. I mean, it's the, we're gonna have a budget for that every five years.
A hundred grand or?
Right around a hundred to a hundred and seventy-five, depending.
Okay.
But again, this is what everything unfortunately runs on with the county. I think we only have two or three physical servers now within the county. Everything else is virtualized. But it's also given us the ability when vendors come in to tell them, no, we don't need to sit there and purchase the hardware from you. We can create the specs that you want on the fly and have it ready for you in fifteen, twenty minutes. I mean, literally, it's that, that easy for us. So unless there's some special circumstances.
So I guess we wait and see whether we can accept it or we have to go a different route, right?
Yep. I got, this is back row, Phil.
Question. Is the additional new licensing included in the ninth thirty-three?
Yes.
Yeah, five years.
Yes. Yep, yep. Dell brings us to five years as far as the license is concerned.
And you said this was a new system. Did, did you mean new system to you? You don't mean an entirely new system.
It's, it's.
So the bugs have been all.
Right. Yeah.
Just new to you.
So, you know, there, there was a couple of counties that, that I verified that I know for certain, of course, are larger counties.
Okay.
That Howard and Jefferson County both are using this VX rail system and they've been very happy with it.
They're happy.
And this VX rail system has been out for many years.
Okay.
But it's just been one of those that, you know, when we first started out, we have a long road ahead of us. I mean, we went from traditional servers to virtual servers and getting the storage in play and trying to get everybody married together and communicating. So this is kind of our next step. And personally for me, you know, I, I look at this as probably the next time somebody comes to you guys and sits there and asks for a major hardware, hardware upgrade like this or additional nodes, it may not be me. It may be Devon. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm not gonna be here, but I'm also saying that I intend on this to be from a storage and compute side of things, one of the last big ones that I come to you and beg and rob for. So.
Thanks, Josh.
You're welcome.
Answered my questions. Have us all.
Any other questions?
So alls I'm asking is your blessing to present it to the council tomorrow evening. Like I said, I will sit there and talk with John from Dell, talk with Eric and tell him that we need to get some documentation together that supports the opportunity and that it's locked in and that nobody else can go after that.
Yeah.
As long as he has the documentation, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that good for you, Holly?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, it's like the other thing when John puts bids out for whatever, a drain engine, nobody bids on it. I mean, the point is, if you put the bid out there, who's gonna bid on it?
Right.
We're not gonna get any others than that one. So.
And, and I'll be completely transparent and fair on this. Are there other companies that can do this? Yes. I mean, there's other companies. And when I say that, I'm talking about manufacturers. You know, there's HP, there's Pure, there's others out there that do this. But the one thing that we have found with Dell EMC is, A, we have a good relationship with them. We've pretty much been in Dell EMC shop for years. And then B, the support and the service that we get from them when we do need something from them as long as we're there. So. And we're familiar with it. It's not worrying a, a new interface or.
Well, it's just boiled down to something you can write the specs for and whoever can bid it, can bid it, but it's, you need this equipment.
Right, exactly.
It's like a dump truck. You spec it out and whoever can bid it, bids it. Usually there's one person to do it.
Right.
Just get that for me.
Will do. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we got Gail. DMA nine one one.
I have a few things tonight. Sorry, I'm not gonna be quick.
Okay.
You're fine. Take the most time you need.
I know. All right. Everybody's seen my reports that I gave you last week. I'm just gonna go over a few of those things. So, uh, met with Congress Rudy's office, Rudy's office, actually. You all know we're getting ready to schedule that meeting. Kelly did contact me tonight and if you think of anything or who you want to be on that private meeting, they would like to know that. So if you guys can look at that or think about that, I can email her tomorrow and they can set up a meeting in reference, the ATT issue. So we will go face to face with them. And my recommendation is we ask possibly Joe McCarter as well, as far as RTC that try to help us. And some of your state elected officials that help us represent our cause in the matter so they have the right to speak on behalf of, if somebody asks them how this turned out in the long time process. So we want to make it positive. So we want to make it positive as far as the interoperability and how things move forward in a positive way, let in more streamlined than what it has been running. Because truthfully, I don't think there are any changes, but when we sit at the table, we'll see what kind of changes or positive things that have been made.
You want that meeting in apples, is that correct?
That is correct. So if you guys can think on that within the next 12 hours, get with me and I will send it to us so we can get that on the books, if you could. So Sheplers Electric, they are waiting on a few things. Jerry from PRS was on vacation. They need a few clamps that they're looking for and they'll finish that up, but you have a couple additional preparations. May not go through this time, but next time in reference to you, I believe that is the final.
That's the grab.
For the grab, you know, in, in those contracts for the jail contract, if you've seen in there, there was a, I don't want to call it whole harmless, but there was a segment in there, it was like $10,000 or something, that was at the end of their contract in the big package. So I didn't see that, neither did Sheplers. And we were going over things just to make sure and we did, and that was found. So I do apologize on that. Let's see, also, I contacted you last week. Obviously, we were in a meeting as well. The FAA has been contacted and will move forward quarterly. The numbers are there in case anything happens or any accidents, so that was reported right away. Your EMPG grant for reimbursement is on, I'm on the second thing. I passed that. Now, also, I have to implement is our timesheets and so forth, and that grant application will be completed. So we'll get that in like this week or the beginning of next, and that will be executed for a half hour wages or up to 18,000. So that has been accomplished. So July 6th, from 10 to 1, we want to invite our community stakeholders, like the sheriff, like law enforcement, so the city, the mayor, you guys. And this is in reference to the tornadoes that hit southern Indiana. So Homeland Security is gonna come up and see what the mitigation looked like and how they were able to clean up and as a government official or help from the public, how did that look, how did that work in cleaning up a total town that was devastated. It's happened a couple of times in the state of Indiana, so they're gonna be up and get their outlook of what happened. So it'd be greatly appreciated if, you know, we had a conglomerate of elected officials and ask IDHS questions, how or what we do and when something like that occurs. So we want to be prepared for that, and you all have IPSEC here as well. So they'll go over the communications that they brought down and, or the towers and stuff, which we have portable towers here. We're a little bit more advanced in some areas just by what we've done in the past and as a district. But it gives a whole overlook of what happens in a disaster like that and how to be prepared and what the trials, you know, trials that they had in there.
July 6th, where at, what time?
It's gonna be at the Forensic Center.
So at the jail?
Yep, July 6th, from 10 to 1. The community, like, you're in the community with Trent, you're invited as well. Michael Lad, you're invited because obviously it affects businesses. So you'll see me go out and about. If I haven't seen you a personal email or I may tell you two or three times, like, Gail, I got it, I'll be there, you know, and we'll go from there. But we're just trying to hit everybody and I apologize if I don't get you, but please, you're all welcome to come. We just need a head count because there will be lunch provided. I will say this Farm Bureau has been gracious enough to do, support a lot of our causes, so. And O E P C, we have been voted on to pay for that lunch, so we need, we do need a head count for that. So moving forward, August 9th, our LEPC group, Tony Passer, Lucy, and I believe that Sunoco has put together a meeting for a lunch and learn, what LEPC does for the community and what EMA does. So it'll be Q and A. They will also have lunch there, pizza, and that's from 11 to 1, August the 9th. So that's the other date. And then on, let's see, I think that's all the dates I need to give you for EMA. I will tell you when we do our salary grants on a quarter or half through the year when we implement our EMPG grant, they need a county plan. So with that being said, you're gonna see more community outreach in a county plan to help oversee major disasters that help within the community. So we're gonna get that community outreach and get that plan on the table and that's gonna be the major plan for our EMPG grant because it's highly needed here because it'll be a community effort to regain some of those losses. Do you guys have any questions on that? Okay, then lastly, for 911, you guys were given a quote. So the Senate bill came out, right? I've talked to you about it numerous times. With that being said, this will come out in 911 funds. So you see, we utilize Priority Dispatch or the International Academy of EMD for EMS already. So with that being said, I asked for a quote because we do have to have certifications within the other entities, like the resources we utilize. Right now, we just have it for EMD, we have policies in place for regular calls that come in for fire and law. Well, now we need the guts, we need the meat and potatoes. That House bill states it. Some of my employees will need a 40-hour pre-basis class. Some of us have already had it, no big deal. But that training, some of that training is allocated through the state of Indiana, so that $8,000 and some that I listed in the email, the state will pay that out of the quote. So you're gonna see me bring that up. I will also bring it up to our advisory board and send that out, but we need to move on that and get that implemented. So if you're in agreement with that, this is a program that we already utilize and I really don't want to use a hodgepodge of programs into one entity. And our Spillman CAD integrates with our Priority Dispatch. So that's one less thing that we have to spend. Of course, it's another system to incorporate a cheaper version of whatever is out there. So, that's why you got that before you today, is that?
We're all on a dream, it's okay, move ahead.
Okay, yeah, okay, fantastic. And then you have the SOPs from the state that I gave you in reference to that, so if there's any questions on that. And that is basically all for 911 EMA. You good with that?
Do you have an EMS meeting?
Yeah, that's my next.
Okay.
So EMS, so community outreach for EMS, when was that, the 28th? Let's get the time frame right.
Yeah, I think it was 28th.
28th, down at Grass Creek, at 6:30 PM. We had the fire station as a community outreach. I have tried to reach out to Key Wana Library as well, so we can post that on the board down there. But this will give your public a chance to speak on what they would like to see with our Fulton County EMS. July 20th at 6:00 PM at the Akron Community. We will have to pay for that building rental there. So Rebecca Harzler, Quick Treasurer, has started advertising that as a public meeting on the East 7th.
What time is it? Was that 6:30 also?
No, that's 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
Yeah. There are no rebels over there. They want an extra half hour.
Wow.
Yeah, no.
That's good.
Yeah, so they would like that to start at 6 o'clock over there. And then wherever else you guys want to meet, I believe the schools want to meet on the July 20th as well.
They're gonna meet before that then, or?
I'm not for sure unless they come to the Akron meeting, so.
Valley will help them with that.
Yeah, he's, he's really been good, Blaine's been to a lot of our EMS board meetings, or EMS meetings in general. So, and that's all I have for that. Any other questions for EMS? I think everything was sent. So the next one I need to clock out. I do a pile of. So the next one, if you don't have any other questions on my stuff, on a regular county employee, I need to move forward with the other.
Yep, you did.
Okay, Jerry Good is unable to be here. I am her, and neither is her chief deputy, so I am the next in line. And there is a couple of things that I've presented. I will tell you, our forensic van needs a few batteries. I know we've talked to you, Rick, and I don't get the terminology correct because I haven't worked for you at the moment. But you'll see that come across, I believe.
Basically, a long story short, she got the new cop, when the new cop's plugged in, she goes to get in her van and it's dead. So she goes, the other morning, she got called out at 4 o'clock in the morning and her van was dead, so.
Right.
So basically, it'll take a battery maintainer, and I'm forgetting, Gail's got the list of a battery maintainer and some stuff to maintain so that her battery eat it. And I think the bill was 1600.
Yep, so you can take that and pass it around. Jerry did sign it. If you approve it today, she would like your blessing on that.
1630.
She does have the money in her equipment fund to do that. So she would like to move forward with that.
Good.
That should solve the problem with the forensic van.
Yeah, you gotta have the van, but you gotta get it.
She's been leaving her van there and we were able to go get her van at the end, at that point. She's got it in her fund. She just wanted your blessing on it. It's already in there.
That's approved, but that would shut up on record.
Yeah, so I need to have a wish and approve across those things, those sales, battery charger and whatnot for the 1630 dollars.
Second. Because Brian's got to sign that.
Okay, so the next thing on the list, we have been consulting with Holly, the county attorney, and obviously the commissioners. I haven't been privileged to all the conversations with Jerry, but I'm presenting it as what I've been involved with. And I have clocked out, but I just want to say, as the community servant and what I do, I clock out a lot to do anything I do, but I never clock in when I get called out at 9, 10, 11, 2, 3, whatever time it is, I never clock in and I never clock out. So that it's free time when I need the county of the 911 EMA or whatever I need to do on behalf of the citizens of Fulton County, just doing it. So I've never been nitpicked before, but now I'm being nitpicked. So when it comes to the deputy coroner's end of it. I will tell you, as I clocked out today and Jerry called me with a cry for help, I did clock out, but I did answer to Aaron Gerhart over Akron because he had an emergency question. And I also responded to an email to set up for a meeting on my regular job duties being clocked out. So I do not go over extended on hours on a deputy coroner's, that I will tell you that.
You put a lot of your own timing on.
That is correct, but I can't start clocking in and clocking out any minute of the hour or day that I get called out. And if I say this by Monday, probably not gonna come to work. So, in regards to that, so we developed a contract. Some of the legal things that I learned when I went to investigative school, I read that by that through Holly. She reviewed it and approved it. We did correct the things that was noted by the commissioners. That was created or corrected. Holly did review that as well. All the deputies have signed this again. So Holly, I'm gonna pass that to you first. That's the newest one that is signed by everybody. And then, I believe Jerry sent you the Fulton County Deputy Coroner's contract, or coroner's cost of services. And here it is again.
You got it.
Present it again.
And she sent that today? Was that today or was it last night? Oh, you got it.
I think she might have sent it.
Oh, these, these made the call, though. Oh, alright, alright.
Okay, so the claims Jerry sent in on the back, she labeled like on the monthly or quarterly how she was labeling it. We both did speak to state board of counts on this issue itself. Speaking with you guys, you advised us just to put the dates of service on there. So me and Vic confused. Jerry said that she would back it up to 6:01, but we're going into July, so in, she can't do it this week because we all have our educated services. She can do whatever you suggest or I just need to know the correct law on contract services. When I do contract services on many other entities, I am not hourly nicked and dined or, you know, scrutinized about whatever minute I'm doing. And I will tell you, when you do an autopsy, I mean, a lot of times we eat those hours. We're gone for six hours, just depending on the case. If it's a child, it's worse. And we'd like to entertain anybody that wants to understand our job to come along with us and notice that. Because when you start breaking it out in a minute or an hourly basis, it's a dollar 25 and I don't, I mean, to me, that's a slap in the face. If we put it out in our whole hour, please look at that, understand what it's doing or what we're doing, which you can't until you do your job itself. There's a lot of paperwork and since COVID-19, it's increased and there's a lot of safety hazards that also go along with that and cleanup that we have to do on our end. So it is extensive. A lot of times we eat that and we don't put that down. So whatever Jerry wants to work with or has us do, we either donate our time or try to work within the budget. But I will tell you, nickel and diamond of going in the budget, you're not staying within the budget. You see what I'm saying? You're, we're gonna have to transfer money to here and there because you never know in emergency services. It's like flipping a coin. You can't put an hour in on, you can't put this or this. And we can put the day, we can put the time. She has it down to the hour needed in each case and what we're due us. So any questions or answers that we can give you, we'll gladly get. We'll gladly review the case with you and so forth. But at this point in time, we're exhausted, what we need to do on contracts. We've signed every time that we want to change and go through that. So if you can just tell us what we need to do, my suggestion moving forward for next year is making this employees and just do it. I mean, it saves us a lot of headache. We don't have time to keep doing this. We don't have time to clock out numerous times during the day or at night to make sure this happens and we got other things on this.
Honestly, I know it's not right. You guys have been paying since first year for the days served. And I know, we looked at that. I already did it with Jerry a couple times. We ran it by Holly and Heard. I think, you know, we signed the claims to yours, which was less, it was like, serves what the job was in a degree in total, to where you can contract amounts in here for different fees. You know, I don't think we need to see ironized bills coming in, you know, just the total for the services done. You guys have done a fantastic job. And I think Holly has concurred with what we've seen. Is that alright?
Yes, and we have it in there with the statutes, the contract. We redid it. We made a request that we say how much we charge for certain things, whether you transport or attend a scene or whatever, so all of that information's on there.
So I will ask this, your other contract services, I'd like to see your contract services and if they put every minute, every five minutes or every half hour or so, hour on the table. Because, just because I'm a county employee, I'm doing work on my own time. So you do not look at me as a county employee when I do work on a contract services time.
Yeah, that's what I said. The others, we do not, so. We'll see, keep this, yeah, placement preserve looks good. And.
So if you can tell Jerry how she needs to do the claims, what we have, what, I know one of our chief deputies, this is like, she depends on that, like the rest of us do, but we need payment for services.
Where's claims? You got claims, you got claims.
Jerry emailed those. I have a copy of them here.
I believe she'll respond back today. There are still some things needed on the claim forms.
Holly, I forwarded you that email. Did you run it to review that? Holly, I forwarded you that email, and you were on it to review that.
Can Holly comment on that?
Jerry said she would back it up to the first of June, and maybe she will submit a claim next week for things moving forward. I mean, we had two death calls last night.
This is the one from today, Gail.
I got it on my computer immediately.
June nineteenth, that's today. Okay, so she still wanted. She wanted it more itemized to see how we got to the nine hundred dollars, to see how you got to nine hundred dollars. And you came, there are no dates attached to it or times. She said she cannot prepay someone to June thirtieth, which we backed out, or we backed that out. So you're not doing that. She indicated that each call out needed to have a specific date and timeframe for the job they were doing. Now, I guess my question is, Christina, was it done this way always in the past? I mean, I've been here four years, and this is the first time.
No, State Board of Accounts suggested the claim because, Gail specifically is a county employee, they wanted to make sure that she wasn't on the clock while she's doing coroner duties. It doesn't matter for the other two because they're not also county employees.
So this only pertains to Gail?
It would, it would pertain to any county employee that was doing that job.
Is there a law, not sometimes you see that law?
So specifically, a time clock indicating she's clocked out is not good enough?
Well, we don't know when she's performing the coroner duties.
So a county employee on her own is different than a private contractor turning in a thing.
Right.
Because at the moment, she's a private contractor.
Yes.
But I cannot clock in the time clock.
Right, so State Board of Accounts is saying, how am I verifying that you're not on the clock while you're doing deputy coroner duties?
So who do I need to call at nine-thirty, whatever hour of the day? Who do I need to call to, how I can?
How does she document that?
And that's an emergency call, so it has to go immediately.
On the invoice itself, if she has a date and a time on there to cross-reference with her payroll records. The State Board of Accounts exit interview is on Thursday, so I'm sure they'll go over it with you.
What's on Thursday?
The exit interview with State Board of Accounts.
Holly, you're a county employee, right?
No, she was an independent contractor.
Okay, but she's sitting here today, right?
She's not also an employee.
It's true, I'm not a county employee.
Lucky you.
As a contractor, yeah, as a public defender also.
So Kristin, note that I was clocked out, and we're fifteen minutes of keeping clocked.
So Gail's the only one you got the problem with.
Just if it were any county employee, it would have the same issue.
So is she to clock in every time, like the day she took those three calls? Is she supposed to clock in?
She can't, she can't clock in. She's not working as an employee in that.
No, that's not, that's not the question. The question is, on Gail's invoice, from what I'm hearing you say, she needs to say at one, one PM to one AM, I got a call out to. Is that what you're saying?
Does the date and the time that she's performing coroner?
Jerry's got that.
She's got it. She was, she was making me equal like everybody else, because I guess if I were part-time someplace else.
I see, and she got a lot of work.
Or if I could jail work for Travis, I mean.
So we can approve and pay everything but Gail's. As soon as she gives you the numbers for Gail's, the actual time, you can pay Gail. Is that correct?
I haven't even certified those claims for payment yet. We just received them today.
But we haven't lost one, or lost one yet.
We've had the totals in for three, four weeks.
She's submitted different ones today, I believe.
That's because you kept requiring something to change.
My audit required a different, yeah.
But every, every two weeks, we get something different. Something else gets changed.
I've, I've been asking for the same thing for three or four years. Nothing has changed. We have to enforce what we've been asking for for the last three or four years because State Board of Accounts does not have the way of contracts we have on file.
But Christina, didn't you write the last two contracts at least?
I absolutely did not write it.
Jerry sat with them, and then she had to white out what you didn't.
I, I gave her a sample template, and I said, here's an example of something you can use. I didn't write anything.
Where we at, Holly?
You want to really say something? Are you, did you want to say something, or are you just shaking your head?
Okay, so are we hearing that the next invoice that Gail submits needs to have the date and time of the call out? Just when she was calling, not how many minutes she was there or anything like that, just the, one AM, whatever it was, and all that data. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what you're hearing, and you said Jerry asked that.
Okay.
But if there's still an issue with prorating an hourly wage, then perhaps the contract should cover it differently than doing it probed out by now.
Why, why are you just, independent contractors, when we get a drainage claim, it just says project done, project forty percent paid, project twenty percent paid? We don't have the hours that anybody spends on that.
The contract that was turned in has an hourly wage, which means I'm going to have to audit it for the hours worked.
But every one of these calls are different. You may spend an hour with family, you may spend five hours.
And just replacing it with a flat fee for that service rendered.
That's what we did initially, but you didn't.
No, 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 there was no service cost in the original contract at all.
Yeah, at the bottom of the contract that you presented last week.
That was one lump sum amount. It doesn't say. I cannot audit a claim if there's no reference as to what service you perform. That's what I've been asking for.
We service the citizens of Fulton County. We pick up dead people. What, what more do you want?
I'll send you a couple of examples from another county. Maybe that will be helpful.
But we've been doing this for a month, and the people have not been paying.
We've been doing this for five months, since first year. And people are needing their money.
Did I hear that there's going to be a problem, Gail, breaking down the hourly amount? You didn't, you just said that making it an hourly amount doesn't make sense because you're not going to break down the hours.
We, we broke down the hour, so Chantel was saying that if I, if I did an hour and a half, we needed to prorate it and cut it into like twenty dollars an hour.
Because the contract says per hour. The new one says that?
No.
But if we submit.
The list of services not say for forty dollars per hour?
The deputy yearly distribution shall be, but not limited to, five thousand dollars quarterly, March, June, September, and December. It gives an amount of twelve fifty. We try to keep it within the budget. By going through every little thing, we can't keep it within the budget because we're, you're asking us to put every little thing we do down.
I'm not asking you to put everything in the budget. It's going to have to be listed in the contract. The page that was sent last night, at eight-thirty last night or whatever, with the list of services, that is what I asked for. But you're saying that the hourly wage is not going to work for you, so I'm asking why there's an hourly wage? Why are you presenting it with an hourly rate if that's not going to work for you?
I referred to Chantel's email where she wanted it. We, we could do an hourly rate on certain services that we're doing within the contract. It's stated multiple times, forty hours. So when it goes to the education, we, we do forty hours on there. If we want to break it down by the minute or an hourly, we actually make it a dollar twenty-five an hour. Which, to me, if you look at the lump sum, it's better.
Because she's just going to blow our, the coroner's budget out of the water if they start charging hourly wages, of course.
I'm not suggesting it be. That list of services suggested that they get an hourly wage.
But that's what you wanted on there, was a list of services, to know what those services were costing us.
I suggested maybe just by transport. A transport is a hundred dollars, or attending a coroner's call is fifty dollars, something along those lines. I didn't pick the hourly wage. They did, and now she's saying that the hourly wage isn't practical.
On some things, it is not practical.
It, it isn't, because when you go on these calls, anytime you're in emergency services, and Travis can probably verify that as well from the sheriff's department, some calls may you expect to take fifteen, twenty minutes, and it takes four, three, four hours. Others take, you expect a long time, and you're in and out and done.
I'm not arguing whether or not it's practical. I'm saying if the contract says it's going to be an amount of money per hour, then we're going to have to know what hours so that we can audit the claim to make sure that what they've turned in coincides with the contract. If they, if they don't want to turn in hours, then I suggest they take out the hourly rate.
Well, the contract that's right here doesn't have an hourly rate right on it. It just says she'll not be limited to, and be paid quarterly at twelve hundred fifty dollars and seventeen hundred fifty dollars, each quarter.
So every quarter, they got a flat fee for whatever she needed them to do.
So I asked for rates in the contract, and rates were emailed last night, but there's an hourly wage associated.
Why do we need rates?
Why do we need rates? You just told us we didn't need rates, and how you tell us we do need rates?
I didn't say you didn't need rates.
Yeah, but why, why do you need the hourly rate?
I don't need an hourly rate. I need a rate per service. That's it. It doesn't matter whether it's hourly. But if you're going to put that it's hourly, then I'll need to know the hours so that we can still audit the claim.
She doesn't need an hourly rate, but she still needs the hours.
Not if you don't put an hourly rate, but you're saying that you, you don't want to keep hours worked because you don't want it prorated.
Okay, but you still want her hours.
Her hours have to be on there because she's an employee, so we have to make sure that she's not doing coroner work while she's clocked in for an hour.
So everything's okay, because I for Gail's part of it.
I apologize to the citizen of Fulton County because this is a joke.
Okay, so no hourly rate, take that out of the contract. Is that in that contract that you signed?
That's what works best for her. I, was she not?
It's in the, it's in the piece of paper that's not attached to the contract.
It's in the piece of paper.
This is not attached to the contract.
That's what I need in the contract, is the rates, whether it's hourly or not. If you want to go hourly, then you have to put your hours in there. If you don't want to go hourly, then just make it.
So what is this piece of paper?
That's another question.
That's nobody signed.
That was from Jerry last night.
Okay.
Just trying to force everything down.
So we don't need this.
That is what I need.
No, it says hour. It was asked.
She, she, that's the breakdown that she, I'm hearing she needs, but if you put it out in a call out, it's sixty bucks or whatever, instead of an hourly rate. That's where we're getting into trouble, I think, is the hourly rate, from what I'm hearing. From what she, Christine's saying, and then with the State Board of Accounts is.
It's not a problem for me. Gail said that she doesn't want to track the hours, right? You don't want to prorate down if it's an hour and a half. If you don't want to prorate it down, then I'm saying then you probably don't want an hourly rate in the contract, just a flat fee for the service.
I don't care how many hours it takes. We'll just put a damn service fee on it. Okay, so I really don't, and I work above and beyond anyway.
So the meeting said forty dollars per hour. You don't want that?
I don't care whether or not it says that.
Well, you're saying that she will have to put.
Yes, she will have to put an amount of hours in, if you want an hour.
So she should just not put anything on here for these specific things?
She'll have to have a rate of some sort, whether it's just a flat rate for going to a call or whatever, that's fine. But if you don't want to include hours on the claim, then remove the hourly fee and make it a flat, a flat fee.
You got to tell me which one.
So all of these hourly rates need to come off.
Okay.
If I'm understanding Gail correctly, that would work better so that they don't have to track hours, so just charge her services instead of forty dollars an hour.
I don't really care what, I want to know what the State Board of Accounts is telling us to do.
They want me to be able to audit the claim, so if the claim says that there was an hour and a half performed, then they're going to have to prorate it at forty dollars an hour, so it'd be sixty dollars. If it's just a flat fee, then she just needs to put in there how many call outs she did at sixty dollars per hour. She did two, she gets a hundred and twenty dollars. I just need numbers in there that are auditable.
So if we take the forty dollars an hour off, why do we have to turn hours in?
She does specifically, so she's not performing dental duties on the clock.
But that doesn't have to have an hourly rate. All you want is, Gail was here for an hour and a half, period, right?
From this time to this time.
She's going to have to have that regardless, but that's not nothing to do with the rates in the contract.
Okay, we're, we're, we're past, we're frustrated. Let me almost stop Christina, but I'll call State Board of Accounts. And I want to get exactly what we need, what they want to see, and then we're going to, we're going to get the resolve here.
She said there was an exit interview this Thursday?
Thursday, yeah, State Board of Accounts, we're going to go through their findings with the county.
Can the county attorney be at that?
This Thursday?
I think it was at one o'clock, if that one was.
It wasn't at one, and they're trying to move it up. Are you and I supposed to be here before one? I got an email, I'm supposed to, I need to go with you, I think, I'm supposed to be here.
Okay, so you're going to go ahead and call anyway.
I'll, we'll try to clarify something. Because I do have a question on this also. Okay.
With the commissioners and the county attorney here, I need to know when we're going to be paid. I mean, if you can, if you have an executive meeting, agree to amount, it needs to be paid so Jerry can get it. Do you have one deputy that?
I can't make a decision in an executive meeting. It has to be in a public meeting.
Well, can you make it today?
After Thursday, I'll promise you this, Gail, after Thursday, when Brian figures out what we need. Well, okay, if we get it figured out, we will call, we need forty-eight hours to call commissioners' meeting. We'll call, if, if I'm speaking out of turn, let me know, we'll call commissioners' meeting and get it, get it figured out. That's, that's, that's I can offer.
Yeah, and you can, I'll let Jerry know.
Okay, thanks, Gail. We greatly appreciate the service of you and Jerry, and your deputy and deputies.
Thank you. Well, I have.
I don't have a whole lot, and I talk real quick. You guys got the reports that I emailed out? I assume any questions or anything on those questions important out there, or? The vehicle locators, we've been working with Stillman and Joshua, they're going, and then Justin's things, get those things lined up, so hopefully, I'm hopeful for the next couple of weeks, we'll have those rocking and rolling. We had fifty-eight inmates in this afternoon, when I checked. We got the contract back from the US Marshal Services last week. I sent, I apologize, I sent it to Brian and Holly right before the meeting. I didn't have your guys' email on my phone, so we're going to be, the contracted amount is seventy-five dollars per inmate per day, and then thirty-five dollars an hour for transports. So it's definitely well above and beyond what, what it's going to cost us to house.
That was up to fifty, I might remember.
Up to fifty inmates. They're not going to need here that much, they haven't called with them yet, but we've obviously had room for them, so. We have to get some training complete for jail staff to be able to lead transports. They have to be firearms qualified and certified, so Larry and Matt Udder's been, Larry Tyler and Matt Udder's been working with them, we're getting some jailers qualified for that, so. We're, we're excited about that. I think it's going to generate a substantial amount of revenue coming back into the bonds, be able to, based off the ordinance, be able to put in the bonds, get them paid back, or paid down. I guess my next one is part-time deputy. When Sheriff Saylor's retired at the first of the year, I thought we came in here and requested that he be brought back in as a part-time deputy to fill in. I found out since then that it hasn't been. We got the position approved through the, through the council to have another part-time position with the same amount of money, but we didn't, I guess, ask for that, so I guess I'm asking for that, to bring retired Sheriff Saylor's back as a part-time deputy.
Is there, is there any specific hours? I mean, is he going to be working any certain hours, or is that just?
It's going to be as needed. I don't see him working a whole lot of hours based off of his, based off of his commitments now, but it does allow him to keep his law enforcement certifications up by being a part-time, or he'll keep his annual training up to be able to keep his law enforcement hours up, so.
I, I guess I don't have a problem with as long as he's, he's used at least a few times a year.
Yeah, it'll be a, it'll be a minimum investment into him. He's got, obviously, all the training now. He's got the uniforms, he's got, you know, all the holistic mess. I mean, every, so, I mean, as far as us investing into him as a, as an agency or as a county, we're going to have a very minimal investment into him, so.
Okay, I mean, he's a former employee, technically, he's not an official, but I guess Travis does have to bring somebody back in to employment. Commissioners have to prove that, so. Commissioners have to prove that, so I'm assuming he'll have to get standing, so.
He did, he did, yes.
So I'd entertain a motion to, uh, Travis provider, former sheriff Saylor's as a part-time employee, as needed.
Second.
October. Motion carries clear.
Thank you. Um, I emailed everybody.
Mr. Caddo, do pay for, great job.
Yeah, he'll stop to do that and I'll let him know that. I emailed everybody last week about, uh, jail chemical addiction or J-CAP program, we're gonna start in the jail. We've been working behind the scenes on that since I took office in January. Basically, several other counties in the state have utilized this program. A variation of different programs, but it's, it's basically a recovery program with developing life, life skills and mentorship. So you're gonna have, um, your AA classes, you're gonna have some of your recovery classes, but you're also gonna have anger management or banking finance, things like that. To be able to have some of these life skills when I come back out in the community. Uh, we're looking at a twelve-week program, um, at least the initial, the initial first program's gonna be. It's gonna start in July, um, with graduation in October. Been working with the auditor's office to get an account set up. We've already received a grant, um, of three thousand dollars. And we've had a lot of public requests, how do I donate to the program? What can I do to help? So, um, I really foresee that it's gonna be, you know, it's not gonna be any issues at all, um, being funded. However, gotta figure out how to get the money to where it needs to go so we can get it back out, so. Been working with them, um, seems to be moving along, so. Um, so far, it's funded entirely by donations, volunteers. I don't see that ever changing. I think that's gonna be a hundred percent funded that way. We had service provider training last week. We had probably twenty-five members of the public, um, anywhere from bankers to, uh, Fort County and to insurance providers, just all kinds of different people. I mean, everybody's invested into this because everybody knows somebody or has dealt with, with addiction or recovery. So it, it's definitely a community investment, so we're pretty excited about that. Any questions on that program? Trying to keep it brief here. Two Hundred West and Nelson Road, been having issues with parking again. You guys did the ordinance back in August. I had the guys go out this weekend and write some, uh, ordinance violations. So, uh, hopefully, I think it's gonna be the same three or four people that are causing issues out there. Hopefully, they'll get the hint. And if not, they'll find their vehicle missing and they get it off the river, so. But it is, and you're actually, I mean, they, they're parking in between the sign and I mean, it's just, it's way below. Can't get across the bridge and it's so far, even the single lane, it's so far, and they get it just on both sides, but it's just not a good thing, so. Um, but the guys are out there, they're aware of the issues out there. The guys are out there working those on weekends, so. Any questions for Rick?
We don't need work with compliments.
At least I have witnesses, right? Yeah.
Did I miss any county? You can walk ahead. Okay, we have, uh, Michael, you, Spencer, you have something?
I'll keep it real quick. I'll start with the housing study right now. There's a meeting, uh, Wednesday. Get the market potential analysis results. It'll tell you, um, what the, uh, market so far looks like. It'll study, but there's still a lot of work to go, everything. I gave you guys this. I'll give it to council this tomorrow night. If you look there, at, on that last page, that tells you exactly where we are in the process. We're just a little bit short of halfway through the whole process and everything. August fourteenth, there's no plan set and I'm not gonna guarantee that date. But there's a housing symposium proposed for right now, that, um, that will be a public meeting where all the, um, uh, results to date will be explained to the public and whatnot. Uh, we put together what we think is a pretty good, um, communications process where, um, not only will I be writing newspaper columns now, I guess I'll do a radio show. I don't know how, who'll get it. There's, uh, we had about an hour and a half meeting a couple of weeks ago and it was, uh, full court press. There's gonna be press releases, there's, uh, meetings, articles, radio, television. We're trying to figure out how to get that involved. So, I mean, these reports, I suspect, starting next month, will be a lot more detailed than they have been today and everything, because things are now gearing up. And then, um, there was a meeting on the fifth of June out at Blacketer Park. And the industrial park will be finished this summer, basically. I know you guys are familiar with it. You know where the road kinda stops and it gets to be bad again and everything? That's all gonna be paved, all the way around to the U-turn, the whole thing, the lot, everything will be done, all, everything. Dan Holtz, right now, has decided he's gonna put two LP tanks in rather than wait for everything. He wants to go ahead and get himself finished as quick as possible. So, right now, that's it. You've got, I gave you some, a sheet of other stuff that I've done, but I'm not gonna go into all that. Um, the one last thing I'll say is I was at a pipe lumber a couple of weeks ago talking to them. And Craig is upset about the condition of Route fourteen. And, um, so I got him in touch with state people, our representatives and senators are now involved in it. What Craig wants is, he wants the whole road torn down and the whole random road removed. And right now, all that they're planning to do is chip and seal. Yeah, so that's, you know, just three of the problems that are going on. Just, you can leave the rest, right?
Thank you, Mike.
Okay. Uh, we have a covered bridge certification. County name is Fulton. Number of covered bridges, uh, per Indiana Code eight dash fourteen dash one dash ten is zero. We, the county commissioners of Fulton County, hereby certify that the aforementioned is a true number of covered bridges within the said county's road system per Indiana Codey. Eight dash fourteen dash one dash ten for the calendar year of twenty twenty-three. Okay. Does it agree with that?
Yep.
And here's a motion to, uh, approve certification, covered bridge certification.
Second.
Okay, we have, um, two minutes. You guys have a chance to look it over?
Yep, yeah.
We have, uh, Monday, June fifth, and Monday, June twelve. Any corrections?
I didn't see any.
Looks good. And a motion to approve the minutes for June fifth and June twelve. So move on.
Second.
Okay, motion carries three. Okay. We have claims. You guys have a chance to look over the claims?
Yep. There is, uh, one claim in there that you pulled out. It is Kokomo gravel to Citizen Cemetery. We didn't, that should not go to Citizen Cemetery. I don't know how they ever got something in there like that.
It will, uh, as we do occasionally, uh, Blacketer, the complex was looking for some help with some, uh, grading and gravel before the opening day. Highway Department went out there to get some grading and cleaning material to do it, so the board, um, agreed to pay for the material.
Their board, not ours?
Their board, the, the Blacketer board, so, uh, we've done calls and whatnot, so that bill will go to them. Then we'll send a check to Kokomo Gravel on their own, so I find it here.
I don't think it'll separate us, the only problem, I get how it's pulling out.
It's, it's in those, it's in the miscellaneous.
I'll correct the, um, sorry.
Okay. Um, can you do that before we get to it? I mean, you know, it's nine hundred, was it nine hundred?
Nine hundred eighty-some bucks, something like that. Or seven, yeah, yeah, that's right.
Seven, seven dollars. Okay, so right at the moment, we have the insurance claims for three hundred, insurance claims. For the disbursement from five eleven to five seventeen, thirty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty cent, fifty-three cents. We have the insurance claim docket for the disbursement for five eighteen to five twenty-four, eight thousand, fifty-five dollars and ninety-four cents. We have the insurance claim, uh, disbursement for five twenty-five to five thirty-one. Ten thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirty-two cents. We have insurance claim docket with the June fees of forty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. We have payroll docket. Payroll date is six sixteen of twenty-three for two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents with a payroll deduction of a hundred and fifteen thousand, a hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-four cents. We have the spring twenty-three settlement, fifteen million, three hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. And we have the, uh, pit distribution spring, twenty-three, eighty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighteen cents. We have the, uh, CBET distribution for spring twenty-three of seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars. We have. The fines of these, the tre- the treasury estate. One million, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and eleven cents. And then the PTC RC, the treasury full payment for one million, two hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-six cents. And we have the lit distribution, one million, forty-one thousand, hundred and seventy-two dollars. And we have the sup- the lit supplement. This is the lit distribution. For seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, fifteen dollars and nine cents. We have utilities, ten, ten thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and nine cents. And we have the miscellaneous claims. You got that, correct them out? Okay, so I have, uh, one million, four hundred and three thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-nine cents. That's deducting the seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and four cents for Kokomo gravel. Okay, we have a transfer request, uh, from the courthouse, uh, from County General. Part-time, twenty-eight thousand dollars. That's for the director. It's for maintenance director wages. We have a transfer request, uh, consultant fee. It's a contract to pay our bond for the courthouse ceiling demo replacement of nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars. It's a area of four, five, five.
Double four.
Had some ceiling problems. We have, uh, vacant administration building, County General. It's equipment repair to a building repair of eleven thousand, sixty dollars.
Is that intended to fix the water damage? Is that why, why that was, you know, why that was brought? Is that what he done that for?
Well, there's one explanation on this. It's from equipment repair to the building and repair maintenance, so it's probably the. And we have additional appropriation. The highway maintenance and repair. By two of us, uh, the mixed aggregate of five hundred and ninety-three thousand.
That's the ones that you're not gonna do, correct, John?
Correct.
And there's, I think you're from that one in there?
Got the, uh, Bridge thirty-two, Bridge fifty.
Yep, we're gonna do that one, yeah.
Uh, NBA's cool, okay, we've got. Okay, so you're pulling all of this, Bridge thirty-two, that. We have, um, additional appropriation request from the network administrator. The IT. Shifting ten thousand, uh, shifting for eleven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars from the network administrator to, uh, the maintenance budget. We, uh, the maintenance away from the IT director. Additional appropriation request, or appropriation request, courthouse to fund the maintenance director position, seventeen thousand, eighty dollars.
Was that for curfew and the other stuff at that point?
Yeah, it's curfew, health, dental, life, just, uh, and then clean that up, get that back where he's at. Okay. You guys have any? I guess this is kind of, I guess we have, uh, contract renewal that are up. The, uh, Tilak First, TP Mechanical. And we've got the courthouse, we've got the annex building, we've got the probation. Uh, these are the same costs as they were last year. We have the option, uh, one, two, or three year.
So, so I take it Kerry's got them in his budget just like we had before, and it's Kerry's over to Kerry's budget. Is that correct? So that money's there, it's just.
Yeah, it's there.
Okay.
In his budget.
Okay.
Uh, so the, uh, courthouse. An annual, um, agreement is nine thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. So. And we'll do all three of these. We have the annex building. Uh, for, we'll do one year. Is that correct? You guys will do one year.
Yeah.
We have, uh, we have an annual investment, uh, three thousand, three hundred and two dollars. These are on-call agreements for mechanical work, or there's more of those chores.
Do you remember what that third one was? Sorry, sorry about that.
One, five thousand, two hundred and one.
Two hundred and eleven, okay. And this one is how much?
Three thousand, three hundred and two dollars. The annex, annex building. And the probation building. Uh, one thousand, five hundred and four dollars. You guys have any questions on those?
I doubt.
And there's a motion to approve the three contracts as stated.
Salute.
Second. Any questions? Or fraud?
If, why one year over locking that in for three years? I'm just, I'm just asking a question.
I'm just, I'm just asking a question. It simply, the prices, the way prices are going up, to lock it in for three years, this price would be not ideal.
The, the thing about lock, my opinion, this is just my opinion, the thing about locking in three years is, once you lock in a contract for three years, okay, so maybe this company the first don't do as good a job as you thought they did before because they got a three-year agreement, they're not held accountable every year to come back and get, get your contract. The, the second one is, we got a brand-new maintenance plan coming in, maybe, maybe in the meantime, something will change after he gets through, and maybe he wants to change something, so.
Just ask some questions.
So I think, I think a year at this point is, is the best. I don't know what you guys think, but that's my reasoning.
Yeah, that's kind of what we do, talk about things in the past. Yeah. We see another year, Kerry gets along well, he likes working with... Okay, anybody else? Good. I think you're taking... Did I get that? There's a motion to approve this contract.
I'll make that motion.
Second. I'll bear it. That motion carries three. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, any other old business?
Oh, gosh. Seemed like I was something, but go ahead, no?
No.
Old business? Chiles Community Business, how do you know?
Boy, I'm drunk, like, seemed like I was going to say something, oh, wow.
Yeah, about a minute and a half.
It wasn't more.
Oh, good. New business?
That's all hands down.
What we said here, Katie came up with some information on the bridge. She'd asked how long would the closure be? Uh, she found out it's going to be fifty to seventy-five days.
Seventy-five days.
Oh, okay, so that's, that's a lot better.
A lot better than what I...
A lot better. I was, I was thinking it wasn't Carol's, okay. Thank you, Katie.
Thanks, Katie. Gail?
I'd like to call an executive meeting with you and your appointed, uh, officials, uh, moving forward with budgets and other things that we've had issues with, so we know our proper place in, um, the policy that's in the count, that's in place for the county.
Do you want counsel at that, too?
I don't care who's there. I want an executive meeting, but I just want one with, uh, all three of you.
All three of us.
And our, and your appointed officials. This, this has gone on long enough, we've, you go a battling back and forth. We need to be a little bit more professional and move forward in a positive way.
Well, I'll have to see if that falls under. There, there's like a list of five things we're doing executive session on, so we'll, I'll check with Holly, and if we can, we'll do it about it. It'll be a public meeting.
Sure.
So I'm just, well, I need to do the appropriate...
Sure, whatever.
We'll get it called.
I see Holly writing it down, she's going to check on it.
Okay. Anything else, new business from anybody? I hear you now, I hear you, motion to recess.
So moved.
Second. Motion carries three. Thanks, everybody.